Jim Callahan.
Here.
Bob Dougherty.
Here.
Dave Edmonds.
Here.
Carolyn Turner. Carolyn? Absent. Mike Ventresca.
Yeah.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Here. First up, under public hearings, public hearing continued, 316 Boston Street, definitive subdivision plan, DM 5 INC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and audience, you may recall that the public hearing on this matter was opened at the July meeting, and a presentation was made of the proposal. It requires the granting of a number of waivers to allow the construction of a proposed 600-foot dead-end road with a cul-de-sac and the creation of three building lots, industrial building lots. The plan had been filed as a way to take advantage of a state law that allows for certain zoning protections if a plan, subdivision plan that is, is approved by either the planning board or, I suppose, ultimately, a court of law. A revised plan was submitted last week to correct or to address a number of concerns that had been raised by the various city departments that had offered comments on the plan. And I was hoping that this evening we would be in a position to continue the hearing and talk about the details of the project in terms of the specific waivers and comments made by the different departments. However, I'm instead going to ask the board to consider after making sure there isn't anybody who wants to speak this evening. I'd like to recommend that we, instead of having a presentation and discussion on this matter, instead continue the public hearing for the board's meeting on September 22 at 7:00 p.m. That additional time, which is about five weeks, will allow me to do a much more thorough and thoughtful review of the waiver requests and the comments made not only on the waivers but on other aspects of the plan by the various departments and be able to work a little more closely with the applicant and their legal counsel about any loose ends or outstanding issues that have not yet been sort of run to the ground that need to be to make decisions on some of these matters. So I would request that you, in fact, allow me to or consider extending the hearing to the September meeting. I did speak with Attorney Tarby, and he indicated to me that that the applicant would be amenable to this extension, so they would not have any issues.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. There any community see anywhere out there?
Yes. So for those of you who may want to make public comments, if you do so, you can raise your hand virtually by hovering over the participants button. You should be able to see you should be able to see on the participant or reaction, not reactions, but a little participant, you should see a little screen that pops up that says raise hand. And if you do that, I will be able to call on you. And I do see one person there now. Pete, who is a guest, has raised his hand. Pete, I am going to ask you to, you are unmuted, so I would ask you to leave your, give your name and your address and your remarks.
Yep, Peter O'Neill, a budding at PX Realty Trust, 216 Boston. I'd just like to see how you're going to address the stormwater runoff on the northern side where the box our property. So I'd be curious to see that in your plans as far as retention ponds and the like.
Have you reviewed the plan, sir? Have you seen?
I'm having an engineer take a look at them as well, and that's one of the concerns that we have so far.
Excellent. Well, one of the thoughts that we might have, it's a very good question, and I'm sure we may have touched upon it to some degree at the initial segment of the hearing. I wonder, Attorney Tarby is out there, and he represents the applicant, and I'm wondering if Attorney Tarby, you could commit to being prepared to explain that at the continued hearing on the 22nd, assuming, sir, that you would be able to attend the meeting on the 22nd to hear that presentation.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we're just curious as to how that's going to be addressed, you know, because there's already, you know, a little bit of wetlands right there as well, and just want to see how you're going to address it.
Yeah, we would be prepared to address that, but what was the property address again?
216, the southern border.
216.
216. Okay. Yeah, we, you know, we meet all of the, all the requirements to stormwater management. Be glad to answer that at the public hearing. Even better if you would, through the chair, reach out to myself, I can put your engineer in touch with our engineer. That would save a lot of time.
Yes, that, actually, that would be fantastic, because I understand the city has their requirements, but it's like, I mean, you've seen the area. It's, it's a little bit delicate to us.
So if you feel comfortable reaching out to Attorney Tarby, you can do that. I suppose alternatively, you could find me on email address on the website, and if you send me your contact info, sir, I'll make sure to forward it to Attorney Tarby.
All right, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Great.
All right. Mr. Chairman, two things. I noted that member Carolyn Turner has joined the meeting, and I do not see anyone else in the audience with their hand raised.
Okay. That said, does anyone from the board want to move forward with the director's recommendation?
Hold on, through the chair to, to the planning board director, Tina. This question that I have is as far as just the whole process of this and the next preliminary subdivision. And your remark, you, you, there was a comment, and I'm struggling to find it now, that you were concerned with the way, you know, because this is basically used to freeze the zoning, that we're going to just kind of gloss over certain aspects of this plan. Could you kind of elaborate on that?
Sure.
Do you know what I was getting at?
Yes, so one of the, one or more department heads who have commented and provided you with comments, but one of them made a comment along the lines of, if this was really going to get built, then I'd be concerned about these issues. And so what I was trying to express is that although this has been filed as a so-called freeze plan, and the applicants really don't intend to ever build, I don't believe, a three-lot industrial subdivision, but rather multifamily slash mixed-use development, it is very much or should be considered a real plan. If it gets approved by the board, even though the owners may have a plan to do something else, if it's approved as a definitive industrial subdivision, then they'd be allowed to build it. So nobody should ever consider it not real, because it could in fact be real. And beyond that, I think that there is an obligation, the rules are the rules, and if we're going to play, we play by all of the rules. Some of the rules say that if you file a plan and you do it properly and within the right time frames and you meet the requirements of the board, you're entitled to approval, and you're entitled to then use and take advantage of that freeze. But it is also true, I think, that if you're going to file a plan like that for a freeze, it is appropriate and correct for the board to apply the standards that would normally apply, even though it may not be their intent to use it, it would seem appropriate to abide by those rules about minimum site distance and curvature of the road and all the things that are in fact in the rules and regs. So that's what I was reacting and responding to and wanted to make sure that my peers knew that they should look at this as if it could be built, because it certainly could if it were approved.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I have a question for Tina through the chair to go on with that line of thinking. Over the years I've been on this board, there's been a number of occasions when people got plans approved and turned and sold them. So it doesn't mean, I mean, I have no idea what anybody's going to do, but I agree with you, we should go forward with this as if this is the plan they're going to build with and hold them responsible for all aspects of it. Because you never know what anybody's financial situation is, and they get an offer they can't refuse, and they sell it. Whatever it was we thought they weren't going to do, somebody does.
Any other questions from the board? Does any of the board members want to move forward the director's recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to September 22.
At 7:00 p.m.
At 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Do we have a second there?
Second.
Oh, okay. Motion made by Bob, second by Jim. Roll call, please.
Bobby Bolton.
Hi.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Dougherty.
Hi.
Dave Edmonds.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Mike Ventresca.
Hi.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Hi. Seven favor, non-opposed. Next up, under public hearings, off New Boston Street, definitive subdivision plan, Industrial Parks, Woburn LLC.
Mr. Chairman and members of board and audience, it's nearly an identical description. This is actually a larger parcel. It's 44 acres. And development would, or the proposed subdivision involves construction of a 400-foot-long dead-end road with a cul-de-sac and the creation of three industrial lots. The plan, again, has been filed as a freeze plan, and similar to the other one, I felt that I needed more time to thoughtfully and carefully go through the waivers and the departmental comments and the most recent plan revisions. Excuse me. So for that, for those reasons, I'd similarly suggest that the hearing be continued to the 22nd at 7:00 p.m.
Any questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Does the director see anyone out there looking to speak?
Again, if there are any participants out there that would like to be heard on this matter, if you would hover over the participants button, and you'll see an option for raise hand. If you press that, I'll be able to tell that you want to speak. And I am scrolling through our audience, and I see no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
So seeing none. Does one of the board members want to act on the recommendation from the planning director?
David here, so moved.
Second.
Nope.
And Dave, motion made by David, second by, was that Claudia?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Bobby Bolton.
Hi.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Bob Dougherty.
Hi.
Dave Edmonds.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Mike Ventresca.
Hi.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Hi. Seven favor, non-opposed. Next up, under public hearings continued, Free Sherman Terrace definitive subdivision plan, Kathleen Paulson, Attorney Salvati. Tina, you muted.
Can you hear me? Trying to save you from my cough. Thank you, Mark. I can hear you. You might want to jack the volume a tiny bit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This public hearing on this subdivision was started, I believe, at our last meeting in July. There was a presentation and a discussion of a number of aspects of the plan. It has been reviewed by all of the city departments, although the Board of Health comment remains outstanding. And the plan addressed a number of issues that were raised during, by the different departments. And at the last meeting, the developer had made a number of commitments to propose the language that would be used to address the comment that the building inspector had made relative to making sure that there was a phraseology in the deed that would allow them to count the frontage on Sherman Terrace as frontage for one of the new lots. And Attorney Salvati has in fact submitted that. Also expressed his intent to submit a copy of the probate court ruling regarding Ms. Paulson's rights to develop the roadway. Most recent correspondence, and he'll speak for himself, indicates that the court document is on file but is still not publicly available due to the pandemic closures. And it also mentioned at the last meeting a desire to make a modification to one of the outlet control structures on the drainage system or for the infiltration system at the corner of Sherman Place and Sherman Terrace, which was a comment that had been made by the engineering department. A couple of other issues that came up over time are with the pavement. The plan started out at, first of all, the requirements for short cul-de-sacs are typically 20-foot pavement width. The developer initially proposed 26 feet of pavement. That had been revised to 24 in the name of trying to minimize the impact of pavement on runoff and drainage issues in the neighborhood. And at the last segment of the hearing, a nearby resident spoke during the hearing and made some interesting points and observations that would support the notion of a narrower pavement width, perhaps down to the 20 feet, which is the absolute minimum allowed for short cul-de-sacs. So I don't know the extent to which the board or how the board members feel about that particular issue, but it has been brought up and is one that perhaps is deserving of discussion and consideration tonight. In the end, this plan will need a variety of waivers to be built as it is shown on the plan. And there have been a number of other recommendations about conditions and requirements from the various departments. I had prepared in advance of tonight's meeting a draft letter of decision letter of approval for this project that I'm hoping Dan will be able to screen share. If I give him that opportunity at the right time, I would like him to share with you or for the audience members benefit the actual decision draft that you might consider for this evening. So having said that, I did share that draft letter with not only the members but with the attorney for the applicant, who is present this evening, Attorney Salvati, who may want to make a few comments at this point. Or may not.
Yeah, can you hear me? Everybody froze.
That's better. I think you're.
Am I there? My connection is unstable for some reason, like myself.
This is good. You're good now.
All right.
Yes.
So I just wanted to mention that we did meet out there with the neighbors a few weeks back. I think we had five or six of them who expressed their concerns for drainage, mainly drainage, buffer between the properties, cutting down of old growth trees and rodent issues. So what we've done, I hope, and Tina has put into the decision, is we've provided, Mark Slager, you can talk a little bit more if needed, a small swale in the back drainage to pick up anything that runs that is not caught, you know, in the drainage system on the front, to pick it up and bring it away from those back properties behind us. And then we couldn't really give them a landscape plan, because we're, there's going to be so much disruption that it's going to be hard to tell what comes down and what stays. But I think Tina has crafted a decision which puts back in a certain number of trees at a certain distance and a certain caliper that should satisfy those neighbors to the rear. As to the width of the roadway, we were always of the opinion that we would have liked 20 feet, because that was the requirement, and, you know, obviously, less runoff and cheaper to build. After meeting with Jay Duran and talking to the neighbor Jennifer Jones, who expressed, Jen and Chris Jones, who expressed the opinion that they wouldn't mind 24 just for the purposes of parking and getting by, we're going to leave this to the board to decide. We'll be happy with 20, of course, but we'll be fine with 24 as well, because that's the way we designed it. As to the rodents, I think there's a requirement in there, and it's, there is a requirement automatically for the house to be checked out by a rodent specialist, but we will also do the land at the time of digging the foundations and treat it accordingly for rats and other rodents, so hopefully there'll be no spread to any of the neighbors. With that, I don't know, Mark, do you have anything you wanted to add to this regarding the width of the pavement or the drainage swale in the back?
No, I just want to discuss the drainage swale in the back, which is basically going to be a small berm.
Hold on. Would you hold on? I'm sorry to interrupt. Dan, would you be able to put the plan on the screen, the revised definitive?
Tina, who was that that was speaking? I didn't catch the name.
Mark Slager.
Sorry. That's Mark Slager of Allen Engineering. He's the engineer of record for this definitive so far. That's a good reminder, Dave. I'm sorry. We'll do that from now on. I'll ask those who speak to restate their name.
Dan, if you could go to page two.
Little.
Hey, if you, yeah, if you can zoom in a little bit too, that'd be good.
We're trying to show the swale on the southern property line, correct?
Yeah. That's good enough.
Yeah, this is one of the, if there's a shortcoming of Zoom, it may be this. Mr. Slager, were you going to make a comment?
Yeah. So what I've proposed along the southern lot line, well, let me back up. With the clearing of the trees and the creation of lawn, there's going to be the perception of more runoff. My drainage calculations show that the peak rate will be reduced.
Good, Dan.
When you're converting it to lawn, the runoff that occurs will be a little bit more visible than what you see now. So in order to alleviate that concern, what I'm proposing is a small berm with, on the downhill side, and then on the uphill side would be a stone trench that would capture the runoff that's trapped by the berm and allow that to infiltrate into the ground. I've added a detail on the plan as well. I don't know whether it's on this sheet or the next sheet, but there's a, it's basically a two-foot deep by two-foot wide stone trench with a berm on the downhill side of it to trap the water. And that'll, that'll help a lot of the neighbors concerned with preventing runoff from getting down into their yard.
Dan, are you able to zoom into that detail? You said it was on the next sheet? Let's see, what are we looking for here?
Uh, zooming down a little more. Okay, the berm and stone trench detail.
Right here on the, on the right-hand side of the frame.
Correct. So what we'll have is just a, up against the rear lot line will be the 12-inch tall berm, and in front of that, on the uphill side, would be a stone trench. So as the water comes down the hill from the right, as you're looking at the detail, it'll go into the stone trench, and then it'll also be trapped by the berm if it, you know, if it fills up the trench so that all of the runoff will get caught into that first. That's all I, that was the biggest change I had, and as you mentioned, there was another change to the outlet for the detention system one, which helped clarify some of the elevations and made it easier for maintenance and observation purposes. So I basically added a manhole. And with that, everything else, nothing else has changed.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if it might make sense. It's up to you. I know there are a number of folks in the audience. I suspect at least some of them will want to address the board. And I wondered if it might make sense for us or for me to run through the draft letter that has at least specifically the conditions that I'm recommending. It may be that some of those recommended conditions actually address some of the concerns and comments you might otherwise hear. Does that make sense?
Sure does.
All right. Dan, if you pull that down and put up the draft letter, if you can find it, I hope you have access to it, but at least take the plan down. And let me start by reading, there's actually a series of 10 conditions that I would propose. The first would be to say that the subdivision is being approved with the condition that the entirety of Sherman Terrace shall remain a private way, the maintenance of which is the responsibility of the homeowners association and not the responsibility of the City of Woburn. Prior to endorsement of the subdivision plan, the developer must provide copies of acceptable easement documents, which would include utility easement, roadway and drainage easements, and temporary construction slash access easements, as well as homeowner association documents that make the homeowners responsible for the, meaning the two new homeowners, responsible for the maintenance and repair of all the roadway and drainage and infiltration system components, the proposed new water and sewer mains and gas lines, and the section of the new retaining wall that will be constructed for this project. There are existing retaining walls for Number 31 Sherman Place and Number 4 Sherman Terrace that will continue to be maintained by the respective property owners. The developer shall also submit prior to recordation of the plan with the registry of deeds an operation and maintenance and dust control plan to the planning board for review and approval. And the plans also have to meet the requirements of the city's engineering department relative to the drainage infiltration systems and shall provide assurance of no undue impact on nearby residents during construction. The O and M plan must provide or include reference to the requirement for periodic maintenance and annual inspections and documentation by the HOA. The second condition would say the developer is required. Proof of gas company approval of the proposed individual gas line services must be submitted to the planning board prior to the issuance of any building permit. Absence such approval, the definitive subdivision plan must be formally modified to incorporate propane service in each house in lieu of providing individual gas lines. Number three, adequate streetlight illumination data must be submitted to the planning board prior to recordation of the plan at the registry. If illumination is found to be inadequate, the subdivision plan must be modified to incorporate a streetlight in a location approved by the Department of Public Works prior to recordation at the registry. And just a footnote that that location is typically at the very end of the street or somewhere thereabouts. Condition number four would say that the portion of Sherman Terrace that's not already slated for full-depth reconstruction shall be milled and overlaid with new pavement, a final coat. If the pavement depth is found to be insufficient for milling and final coat of pavement, then it shall be removed entirely, and a new base with a final coat of pavement shall be installed in its place. Number five, condition, proof that a petition, and this would bear on the issue of roadway width, but if you went to a roadway pavement width of 20 feet, I would recommend a condition that requires proof that a petition has been filed with the traffic commission seeking a no parking restriction on both sides of Sherman Terrace, and that should be submitted to the planning office prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number six, that the following clause be included in the deed to lot number one. Quote, Sherman Terrace shall be considered to be the legal frontage for all zoning purposes, and shall be considered the quote "front lot line" end quote for said zoning purposes. Such portion of the lot that fronts on Sherman Place, as shown on the plan, is not to be considered the front lot line nor utilized as such other than for access. The footnote here is that's the phraseology recommended by the building inspector or the, to address the issue raised by the building inspector, I should say. Condition seven is proof that petitioner Kathleen Paulson Condition seven is proof that petitioner Kathleen Paulson has the right to improve Sherman Terrace. That proof shall be submitted to the planning office prior to commencement of any work within the Sherman Terrace right-of-way. Number eight, that the developer plant shade trees a minimum of two inches in caliper at the time of planting along the southern property lines of lots one and two, beginning at the end of the existing Batuminis driveway on lot number one, approximately 75 feet southeast of the Sherman Place right-of-way, and for a distance of approximately 220 feet, the said trees planted at, I'm sorry, I've got the outdated wording. I want a condition that says the trees will be planted at 20-foot intervals or at some other interval that may be agreed upon with the butters nearby. It may be that regimental spacing of 20 feet is not in the best interest of some of the property owners who are but, who may have gardens and lawns that they're a little bit concerned. So there would be a total of 11 trees placed approximately 20 foot feet apart, but that interval could be varied by mutual agreement with the butter. Condition number nine would say the developer must submit prior to commencement of site work and or building demolition proof that the services of a rodent abatement firm have been secured. And lastly, construction of all aspects of this subdivision shall be completed within two years of the date of the definitive plan was approved. And that would theoretically be August 18 of 2022. Those are the conditions.
Any questions from the board?
First question I had is condition five, I believe it is.
Yes.
The traffic commission. This is a private roadway. So what rule, what, why does a city want to lay in on it for a parking?
So.
And the second part, if they're concerned about parking, then it seems to be too narrow a street. And that's why we have street width designed the way we do. So if there's going to be a private street maintained by a homeowners association, should they be handling that?
So to my knowledge, I believe the city does have the authority, if it wants to, to regulate parking on private ways. I can confirm that and should have, but I'm pretty certain of it. As to the other parts of your question, so 20 feet is what the requirement is in the rules and regs. And you're right, Mr. Callahan, in the sense that that has been determined by a planning board in Wilburn in the past to be adequate for these short cul-de-sacs. So one could certainly argue reasonably that limiting or prohibiting parking on the street isn't necessary. In practicality though, no matter how good someone does plowing on a road, there can be times when 20 feet of pavement is relatively narrow, especially if there is a car parked on the street. On these short roads, there's very little traffic. There's no through traffic, obviously, and only those that live nearby are on it. So very often it doesn't cause a problem. In practicality, you're driving slowly and you can drive around the car that's parked to get into your driveway. It's not something I am passionate about, but it seemed to be a way to ensure that if we went with a narrower pavement width, we would be, there would be less of a potential impact on safety if we also prohibited parking.
We're going for clarification. Short cul-de-sacs is 200 feet, is that correct? Not, we have 209 here.
That's right. They are technically nine feet over because we measure to the very, very end of the roadway. And here it will be about nine feet over.
Unfortunately, I don't want to be the hairsplitting type of person, but it appears that the Downs Court subdivision that we approved seems to be blown back in our face more often than not as a point of precedent.
I, I'm not sure about the Downs Court reference. Exactly why in respect you mean.
So just some of our conditions that we approve for a specific subdivision is being used to set a precedent. And that's my interpretation of it, but those are my comments. I have nothing else to say.
Any other questions from the board?
Through the chair, Tina, do we put a timeframe on these things about when they can construct? Because I know over the years, we've got a lot of complaints about these small projects that are taking place in the middle of neighborhoods and this contract is coming in on Sundays and too late in the day and all this other stuff. So do we state a restriction?
No. And the reason I have not included it as a couple of reasons. First of all, there is a city ordinance that specifically spells out when outside construction activities can occur. And that city ordinance would apply and does apply to subdivisions. There have been occasions when this board has chosen to, instead of relying on the city ordinance, impose limitations that are slightly different from the city ordinance. And in those cases, or at least one case, and maybe two, that I know of, that causes a lot of confusion. And we had one spectacular issue on Dragon Court where there were multiple complaints and some legit and some were, you know, to be debated. But we, I think, discussed then the probably better approach of relying on the city ordinance so that these contractors and subdivisions are being subjected to the same rules and restrictions as contractors and developers in other parts of the city. So I did not include any here, and that would mean then by default that the city ordinance will apply.
What does the city ordinance say?
I don't have it memorized, but I'll try to look it up as maybe as we get into the public comment. And I have a minute, I have access to my O Drive and I'll see if I can find that document.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one other question. I know I said otherwise. This is for Attorney Salvati.
Go ahead, Jim.
As the petitioner applied for application with the Eversource and National Grid companies to date.
We have not, not yet. So we know the gas company is going to be an issue, although I, I've heard they are doing a lot better than they were at the beginning of this, of all this, but no, we have not as of yet.
Okay. I think the deadlines for construction on the, these developments strung out and that's why I'm asking a question. I think you know that.
Yeah, we'd probably file that tomorrow if we get approval.
Thank you.
May I also interject for a moment, just because I haven't mentioned it yet, that you should also check, just get a call into the post office. I'm pretty confident Attorney Salvati that where you're only really adding one new dwelling unit, that they're going to allow you the traditional mailbox on the street or mailbox on the wall of the building approach. But we had promised the postal service that we would specifically mention to every developer who came in who receives an approval, and assuming you might get it, that we notify you that they do have rules now that may or may not apply and affect how mail is picked up. I'm, like I said, pretty confident with one single family house on existing street, you will not be looking at, you know, a multi-faceted mailbox, but you should contact them as soon as possible.
I do.
Any other questions from the board?
Kevin, I have one. Tina. Tina, I think one of the issues that may have been raised by the DPW was if the roadway, if the board were to approve 20-foot pavement width, there was a, an issue regarding certain changes to the catch basin that they'd be reflected in any changes in the engineer's calculations. Is that addressed? If the board does allow the 20-foot width?
Well, with respect to the catch basins, if you did approve the 20-foot width, then you're astute. Carolyn, there should be something in the condition or in the decision that requires that they make that modification to the catch basin to the plan before it's presented for endorsement. The second part, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting. The second phrase of what you read was.
Had to do with the applicant's engineer calculations, which would, it's really one issue.
I think it is. And, you know, certainly the calculations would be run, but I think speaking only in general terms, and perhaps Mr. Slager is the best one to call on to respond to this, but with, obviously with 20 feet of pavement, we, one would expect, or let's put it this way, with four less feet of pavement width, there would be less impervious surface. So one would hope that it would have nothing but a benefit to the calculations, though it may require the catch basin change to ensure that there is sufficient capacity to accept the additional runoff should they get it. Was that in the today's comment letter from the engineering department?
I didn't see it in the, I saw it in the staff report.
Very good. Yeah, that was, that was a comment that we received, mentioning it. We received that this afternoon from the engineering department, and that should be included in the list of conditions. And I would amend the draft to include it.
Okay.
May I add something?
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. I did have a discussion with both Jay Duran and Greg at the engineering department. And the catch basin in question is the new one that's being proposed at the, on the right side of the road coming in. And they were concerned that the steepness of the grade in that location, one catch basin or the type of grade typically used may not capture all the runoff. So one of the thoughts from Jay Duran was that we add a double great catch basin in that location. If the board chooses to do that, then I would suggest having that amendment made prior to endorsement of the plans. And then similarly, if the board chooses to reduce the pavement width to 20 feet, I would also suggest that the requirement be that the plans be amended to reflect 20 feet of pavement prior to endorsement so that there's no confusion later on.
Any other questions from the board? See, none. This is a public hearing. As the director, see anyone who would wish to speak?
Nice. I think everyone was in and heard the earlier discussion. But if you would like to be recognized and speak during the hearing, please hover your cursor over the participants button and hit the raised hand option. I should also tell you that if any of you have joined us by telephone, then you should hit star nine and that will raise your hand. I have one hand raised. Ms. Jennifer Jones. Ms. Jones?
Yeah. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
All right. Wonderful. So there's, I took down the numbers of the different items in the letter. So I'll reference that as, as I walk through, but again, my name's Jennifer Jones and I'm at four Sherman Terrace. So I'm the neighbor directly across the street. Regarding number one and Sherman Terrace being, remaining a private way and the homeowners association responsible for clearing, since we are across the street, I just, I want to make sure in whatever type of thing with a homeowners association that, that we're informed about what that procedure is. And if it's a, an action that the homeowners association has to take on maintaining the roadway, that we're notified of what those conditions are. For number three, regarding the streetlights, I think when we had met with the engineer and with Attorney Salvati a while back, we had discussed that it was our preference not to have a streetlight at the end and have additional roadway light shining into our yard and into our house. So if that's something that we're able to prevent, we would like to advocate for that. I understand there's some stuff with the city, but if, if, that would definitely be our preference to reduce light. Regarding number five, and this is probably the one that we're most concerned with, with street width. Our preference is for the 24-foot width and no restriction for no parking along Sherman Terrace. As we use the roadway and if we have visitors and things like that, it impedes on our neighbors. If any of our guests have to park along Sherman Place, which is, and I think noted in the last meeting, is narrower than the proposed 24 feet on Sherman Terrace. So it would be our preference to do the 24 feet regarding additional traffic on the street with two additional homes. And right now, we're in this situation where the home is, across the street is unoccupied. So it's not so much of an impediment to us, but if there are people using the properties over there, we're going to get some side-by-side traffic. If, you know, we have deliveries, the mailman currently turns around in our driveway. So we really would appreciate a 24-foot roadway. Regarding the, the number 10, I think I had stressed this, I've, you know, I know you're, you've kind of taken some action against it, but if there are some developments in town that have taken a longer period of time than others. So we do want to make sure that we don't go over two years. If there's any way that it could be considered that it would be less than two years, such as 18 months, that would definitely be a preference, I think, especially at a time right now during a pandemic when nobody knows how long we're going to be occupying our houses and, and working from home. So the shorter the better, for sure. And then just with the, the information about the post office, again, if it changes because there's a subdivision across the street, we just want to make sure that we're, we're again not included in any kinds of changes like that, that we can maintain what we have over on our side of the street. So that, that's all we have here.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll lower your hand. We do have one other. It's a team of Erin Craven and Robert Brothers. Please state your, your address and feel free to make your remarks.
This is Erin Craven, Six Sherman Place Court, one of the rear butters. And just wanted one clarification on number seven with the, it's not on the screen at the moment, but related to the proof of petitioner being submitted to the planning office. And just to ensure that she has clear title to the entire property and that evidence of probate has been met. And I know we've mentioned and raised the issue a couple of times and each time we've gotten an answer that doesn't actually say that she has clear title to the entire parcels and that she has evidence of probate all the way around. So just wanted to double check on that because we discussed it and number seven does not cover it.
Very good. Do you want to address that now, Mr. Chairman, or do you want to finish the remarks and go back?
Can I address it now?
Sure. So Attorney Salvati, I'm going to let you start. I know that you had provided us with some information relative to that, and it may be that we need to amend the proposed condition. But I thought I'll let you respond and react if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, and address at least the beginning of this discussion.
Good. To answer that title issue, number one, you're talking about two different things. One is title in the property and two is rights of the roadway. The title to the property is clear in Kathleen Paulson. She obtained, there's three lots on this original subdivision plan lots C, D, and E. C and E were transferred to herself and her husband, you know, many years ago. And they were tenants by the entirety. So upon her death, she became the owner of C and E. Lot D was owned by her husband upon his death. I have provided to the planning board the probate of Mr. Paulson and showing that he, she was a sole heir and therefore has title in, in the third lot. So all of the land is owned outright. The only other question, and I think number seven addresses it, is whether. upon receiving those lots from their family in the past, whether through probate or through deeds, they, they became, had the rights in the roadway, that is, there might be a couple of prior probates that I have to show the planning board that show that the rights in the road, if owned by others, were passed down through probates to my client. So those are the two issues, one of which I think is clarified, and one of which I will clarify.
And that is, just to put a fine point on, that information that you had shared with us about the probate of Lot B, that's something that I can share electronically with, with Ms. Craven because you did submit it to us, so it'll become part of the record here.
Sure. No problem.
So I have a second person, Mr. Andrew Martin. If you wouldn't mind giving your name and address and making your remarks.
I'm Andrew Martin. I live at 10 Ingles Street, and I'm a direct abutter to the proposed development. And I wanted to know, do you have a rough idea from the approval to when the construction would be scheduled to start? And the other thing is, I know no landscaping plan has been handed in so far, but with the, the, the bad windstorms that we've had, there have been a couple of blowdowns. And I'd like to know if some trees are going to be left in situ and not cleared as part of this development. Are they going to be checked for, for want of a better word, their stability? Because if the ground is being cleared around the trees, then there's no guarantee that the trees aren't going to be killed off. And one of the blowdowns happens to, to go between my property and my neighbor, Janet Lorin, and it was a near miss. And then there've been two other blowdowns, which were trees that were already dead. And I cleared those. So if trees are going to be left as they are, I don't want them to end up on my house. So if those trees were completely cleared, I wouldn't have a problem with it, as long as there were barrier trees put in place in basically a tree wall between my property and the proposed developments. So would that be something that could be considered? I think that's it.
I could probably address that a little bit. I did meet with Mike, Mr. Martin out there as well, and we did discuss some of the dead trees, which I have agreed, the owner has agreed to move if, if they are dead, and if they are somewhat of a thorough end of the dead end, and it's uphill and over the hill from us, I'm not sure how much disturbance we're going to have from that point because the house on that end is going to be, you know, probably 40 feet or so from his lot line. But I did, I did discuss it with him, and we are willing to meet him out there and clear up any dead, dead trees that need to be done and probably replant at the same type of distance and caliber that was put in to the recommendation. So if Tina wanted to add that to the lot line, I don't know that would be more than maybe three or four trees.
Right. Well, the, the, the point I was, I was making was that the tree that fell between my property and my neighbor's property was a perfectly healthy tree. So the tree doesn't necessarily need to be dead for it to be an issue. If it hasn't been pruned or taken care of since the, like, obviously, we, we talked about this when we were there, that the land is unkempt. If the roots are, are disturbed with, with the clearing of the land, I mean, it can, the tree can be dead in a year. It doesn't, it might look healthy now, but it could be lying on my property a year from now. So I, I wouldn't have a problem if the whole lot was cleared.
Okay. Well, I can, I can tell you, Mr. Martin, that the board has agreed to take down any trees that you want. I'm not so sure that we can make that a condition, but
Right.
I can tell you in this public forum that, that we will take down any trees that you want removed, if they're on our land.
Okay. And if you want to meet again, we, we can meet over there, and we, we can go over everything again if you want.
Well, I'll be glad to do that prior to any construction.
Okay, that's cool.
Tina, I'm you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, that was it, right? You're done with your remarks?
I'm done, thank you.
Charlie. So, Mr. Chairman, I am looking through the audience, and I see no other hands raised at this time.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just a, a, a general question, I guess, for the board to kind of ponder is the roadway width. I think that's kind of where I'm struggling. You know, I, the way the plan is, it's 24 feet. The DPW superintendent, I think that's where we came up with that number, and you know, when, there's a lot of going back and forth between 20 feet to 24 feet. So I'm just, I think we need to debate that a little further, and which way, you know, we'd, we'd like to go that. Personally, I, I'd like to keep it to 24 because that seems to be the easiest path out. I mean, we wouldn't need to continue this. This way, it, it reflects the current plans. That's kind of where I'm at, you know. Again, I could be, you know, swayed one way or the other, but I'm leaning towards keeping it to 24 feet. I am mute.
Just contemplating.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at, so.
I myself, I am also on board with Mike with the, the 24 feet. I'd like to keep it that way.
And again, the petitioner is agreeable to that, and it would certainly make the Joneses happy, which is what, what our intent would be, so I think 24 feet is fine with us.
Now, the only other, what, what was the other side of that now? That was, was brought up by Mr. Reom, right? Was the, obviously, you get more runoff. That's the downside. You know, it's...
Yes, and some of the reasons that had been mentioned for a 24-foot pavement width was concern that city plow vehicles, which have been plowing Sherman Terrace, and as I understand, will continue to do so. The concern was that the reduced, a reduced pavement width less than 24 would make it perhaps difficult for them to, you know, not run into street signs or the retaining wall because it was, you know, going to be narrower. And that was a little bit undermined by the fact that some of the existing conditions are less than 20 feet on Sherman Terrace. But Mr. Rayom had mentioned that too, that there had not been, he'd lived in that neighborhood for decades, I believe, and has never seen or witnessed an accident or difficulty with existing conditions that frankly would even be improved with 20 feet.
Through the chair.
Hi, Claudia.
So like Mike, I'm, I'm struggling with this because there are certainly pros and cons on each side to the 20-foot pavement versus the 24-foot pavement. I think one of the issues for me is something that Jim brought up earlier. What he was talking about was when we, for a particular project, decide to bury our rules and regulations for that particular setup, what we often find, and, you know, I don't fault any petitioner for doing this, what we often find is that we're faced with that decision going forward as to why it's the same thing with projects in the future. So if we do it once, I think, you know, Jim's point is well taken, that we have to be prepared to have a similar argument brought forward to us again when conditions arguably are similar. And so when that's the case, we as a planning board have a different perspective on it than any, any one neighbor, any one abutter, any one petitioner. We have to think about what we do in the broader context of the city. So in, in looking at that, I'm thinking to myself, well, what's the broader context for a minimum pavement width of 20 feet, which I can't remember the last time we approved a project with a minimum pavement of 20 feet? And so then I asked myself, well, why is that? And the answer essentially is because you can put up all the no parking signs on the planet, but people are going to park, and people are going to have pool parties, and people are going to have Christmas parties, and there's going to be, you know, parking on the street in a way that is a problem. And then I think, well, on the other hand, the rest of the streets in the neighborhood are already 20 feet. But if we took that as a get-out-of-jail-free card, then all of the streets in the future would never rise above the streets that are there. So on balance, I come out to 24 feet of pavement. I understand that the drainage would be easier. No question. But if that's true, then that's true anywhere in the city. The drainage will always be easier if we go and have 20 feet of pavement every subdivision that comes before us from now on. And like Jim, I'm a little concerned about that because there are safety reasons, there's parking reasons, you know, there's other reasons why we would take the hit on drainage for pavement. So that's my thinking for, you know, comment by my fellow board members. I am all set. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Hi, David.
Yeah, my recollection is a couple of years ago, we had a lot of discussion on street width. Remember that plan we were working on about trying to come up with some rules about how we wanted streets to be, and what we were talking about was wider streets, be more consistent. And I like the 24 feet because of everything everybody else has said, but it's a safety issue to me. 20 feet is not very wide, and you start parking cars, and somebody gets out of their car, and they're a little bit not paying as much attention to how close to the curbstone as they are, and the next thing you know, there's blockage, and it's a dead-end street. I like the 24 feet, and that's what I'd like to see. That's it.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Through the chair, Tina, is there, was there another issue that was open other than the pavement width? I just have this niggling thought that there was something else that we needed to decide as a board.
Well, it was that condition number five, and that was talking about filing a petition with the traffic commission about no parking. So if the board has decided, at least a majority seems comfortable keeping the subdivision proposed pavement width at 24, then at a minimum, you would want to consider adopting the draft that's been prepared, and, but with the amendment that condition number five in the draft be deleted. That was the one that would have required a filing with the parking, or traffic commission rather, relative to no parking.
Okay, so we would delete that then if indeed the vote is for the 24 feet. I do have a follow-up question to one of the speakers tonight who, who pointed out condition number seven. And the way that that condition reads is that the petitioner has to prove that she has the right to improve Sherman Terrace prior to the commencement of any work. I guess I'm just, I, I'm going to, I'm going to pose this question to Mark Salvati because what I'm struggling with is, as a planning board, we approve a road, and I've never really thought about a petitioner having title to a piece of property, but yet perhaps not having a title to the road. But now I'm thinking about it, and so my question is if, you know, there's some problem with, with title, as, as Mark, we both know, can happen, despite, you know, you never know. The, the practice of law is always one which surprises me. So my question is, if it turns out that the petitioner does not have the right to the roadway, the right to improve the roadway, then not only does she not have the right to commence any work, but she doesn't, does she have the right to come before us and ask for this plan to be approved? Because without a petitioner that has the right to improve the road, how can I know that this plan I'm approving is, is something that the petitioner has the right to ask me to approve?
Well, number one, I don't think we've ever discussed it before, or I'm sure it's potentially been an issue on, on a private way, where it's, you know, there could have been someone who did not have the rights in the road, even though they abutted the road. As we know, on a, you know, generally on a, on a private way, you want to the center of the roadway. I think a land court petition would resolve that if needed. I hope it doesn't come to that, but if, if it's found that my client doesn't have the rights in the road through some kind of probate, I would file a land court petition to prove it, you know, that way. But I, I don't see us ever getting into the discussion before, and I, I don't even know that it's appropriate at this point to require it from me, although I'm, I'm willing to do it because I'm confident in the rights. But as you know, my position would be that abutting a, a private way gives her the right to the center of the road and, and therefore the rights in the, in the road to petition the planning board.
It's interesting, Mark, because you're right. I, I don't recall ever having this discussion with you or another petitioner. And it just, you know, the, the discussion around the condition just made me think about it, that ordinarily, when a petitioner comes before us with a subdivision plan, they have title to the property in order to subdivide it, right? That's all that we're really concerned about. But, you know, with regard to a private road rather than a public way, you know, that's, that's just an issue I've never thought about. So basically, let me just finish my thought, Mark, I'm sorry, before it goes away. My thought is that if we approve a subdivision plan, that your client has title to, right? Title enough to ask us to approve the subdivision plan, and we say, okay, in order to build out the subdivision, you need to do X, Y, and Z to this road, and it turns out that you don't have title to the road, or don't have, you know, unimpeded rights to make those improvements, then simply you wouldn't be able to build the subdivision until you had the ability to improve the road as we've, as we've told you to. Do you think that is, is, is correct?
Yeah, I think that's correct. I have confidence that we can do that. That's why I'm not, I mean, I had filed a letter to Tina that basically said it is our position that she has the rights in the roadway based on the probates and, and the abutting nature of her property. Objected to that, that have, you know, they could file an appeal of, of, of this decision. But provision, I was okay with it because I have confidence in, in, in approving. So that's my position. But I, I think, I think the planning board can approve it. I think she has the rights in it today, and that condition can be met.
Okay. I, I, I think, I think that's right. I mean, I just had to think it through, Mark, because like I said, it never, I've never thought about it before. But the detriment is not ours. I mean, your petitioner owns the right to this property. We can tell you, okay, subdivide it if you can build this roadway, and then either you build a roadway and you subdivide it, or you can't build the roadway, in which case you have a subdivision plan that you can't use.
That is correct.
Okay, I, I am all set.
Through the chair, I have a follow-on to that. Kind of intriguing. So would, who would verify that she has rights to improve that, if that condition was not on our approval? Who would verify that she has the right to build, to build out the roadway?
I don't think anybody would actually verify it. I think the only way that would get uncovered is if somebody chose to appeal the approval of the subdivision on the basis that the person didn't own it. Am I right, Attorney Salvati?
No, I don't think so. I think that the, the, the only way that that would be uncovered I think that the, the, the only way that that would be uncovered is if you started to build the road and some other person with an interest in the road sued you to stop you.
That, that would be probably the only way, or if the title company doing the title for the purchase of the first lot, look carefully at, at our subdivision process and, and, and looked into that and said, well, you don't have clear title to even sell us that property because the road wasn't built properly. I think that's the only way that issue would be discovered.
Good. I guess what I was getting at is why would we have that condition on here if it would be caught otherwise? But now see, we do need it.
Yeah.
So, so Mike, if, if Mark on behalf of his client is willing to say to us, okay, fine, put that condition in there. It's a condition of approval as well. So I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a person in the audience, if there are no other board member questions.
Okay.
I'm going to call on Ms. Jones again. Ms. Jones, if you wouldn't mind repeating your address and making your remarks.
Hi, Jennifer Jones and Four Sherman Terrace. I think regarding that number seven, I think it's a question that I have because it, over time, since we've owned this house, we have had conversations with the, the owner at Three Sherman Terrace regarding rights to the street and ownership and should improvements need to be made. It was always conveyed to us that the expectation would be that we pay 50% of whatever improvements needed to be made to that roadway. And that's by the owner of Three Sherman Terrace. So I just want to confirm that, that we have an expectation that if we are also on that roadway, that, that we would be entitled to 50% of the, to the center line of the roadway. So I just, I just wanted to express that because it, we, we have always seen it as a shared piece of land that we have opened for access. So that's all. Thank you.
So can I follow up on that with Mark? So if we give you the subdivision approval that says, hey, you can build the subdivision if you improve the roadway to these specifications and you say, okay, and you approve the, you know, improve the roadway, then the abutters such as Ms. Jones get an improved roadway without having to pay, right? Because in order to get your subdivision, you've got to improve this road. Jones doesn't have an interest in your subdivision, so she doesn't have to pay. I mean, I'm just closing the loop, Mark, is.
Right. And that's, and that's how we, we've actually have done that in the past, where abutting property on opposite sides of the street were not members of the homeowners association, but did get the improvement of the roadway.
And just so I can understand, would, would the, the only homeowners that are in this association are the ones that will be coming out of your subdivision, correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one other member in the audience, Ms. Paulson.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please hear your remarks.
My, my comment will be, has to do with the road. My husband, who, my late husband, I should say, has always told me that we owned at least half the road. Because he would say to me, you own, where, where our line was, you own beyond that. You own half the road. So I automatically own at least half the road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair, I do have one more question in regarding the, a landscape plan as was brought up. I know the, the applicant is willing to kind of do the right thing, which is, you know, make sure everybody's happy and take care of the, some growth and whatnot. Are landscape plans part of the requirement?
No, not, not in our rules and regs.
Okay, as long as we, we have it on record that, you know, that the, the applicant is willing to do, you know, meet with the, with Mr. Martin and kind of go over what's going on back there. So I'm fine with that then.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question, just to follow up on Mike's question. Well, sometimes we have landscape plans. Is it because that this is such a small subdivision that it's not one of our requirements? Tina?
So I, I'm, I don't know that I recall seeing a specific landscape plan with a subdivision. See them lots with site plan reviews and special permits. But, and, and there certainly may have been subdivisions in the past that I'm not aware of in Wilburn that provided a landscape plan. But I don't recall that as something I have commonly seen since I've been here. You remember differently?
No, not necessarily. I just remember, you know, many, many discussions in the past, especially with former member Feld, who had very specific likes and dislikes with. I see everybody laughing who remembers this, had very specific likes and dislikes with regard to trees and types of trees. And I'm just trying to place that, whether that was in the subdivision context or not. It may not have been.
I could, I think I could jump in from memory and tell you that oftentimes what the planning board did was retain jurisdiction of a landscaping. And then it was a, a post landscape plan that was filed. And that kind of went away because I think there was a lot to do for the planning board. And we used, then we started putting it on the building inspector and saying that the building inspector had jurisdiction of the landscaping. And I think even that got too much. But that, my recollection was you used to retain jurisdiction and the plan came after.
That sounds right, Mark.
Any other questions from the board? See, and then, it's great to see anyone in the public still wants to speak.
I will give it one more sweep. I do not. We have exhausted them.
What's the will of the board?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by David Cole, public hearing, seconded by Carolyn. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bulken.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventreska.
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye, seven in favor, not opposed to close the public hearing.
Ready for a recommendation?
Yes, we are.
So I would recommend that the board consider adopting as its decision, the draft decision I prepared and submitted to the board and which we've discussed this evening. There are at least two potential, or one or two potential changes. The draft, we would delete what was condition number five. So there would be no condition number five relative to parking restrictions, and that would be deleted. And the only other thing that I believe I heard throughout the meeting was a request that the board consider imposing or requiring that the other property owners who use and have frontage on Sherman Terrace, that they should be notified if the HOA is going to be doing work to maintain the road or any of the utilities and features of the roadway. It would seem that if the board was going to entertain that, that it would be a condition, that that would be a provision in the HOA documents perhaps at a minimum, and perhaps even as a condition of board approval. Is there any support from the board members relative to that notification requirement suggestion?
Through the chair. Under the circumstances that there is still, you know, at least a arguably open question as to who has the right to improve this road, I think as a condition of approval, that makes sense. That we can certainly condition the approval of the HOA giving notice to the abutters. And we can also ask that it be in the HOA documents going forward. Because if you think about it, the HOA isn't going to be in existence until after the properties are sold, right? To other people, the developer is going to be doing the roadway improvements. And then in, in essence, what we're asking for is after the developer sells these properties to other people and the HOA is in place, that's when the notice requirement goes into effect, right? So all that the developer can do is to, you know, you know, make us comfortable that the HOA will notify these people when there is new, you know, items to notify them about. And I would think that as a condition of approval, the HOA documents would reflect this notice requirement is about the best we can do. I mean, thinking it through, that's, that's where I'm coming up with it, but.
Is it, I'm sure you were on this. I don't know, that may be Attorney Salvati trying to respond. But one of the things that I'll just mention is that we do talk in paragraph number one about the HOA. So it would be a good place to maybe put a suggestion. I can certainly work on some draft wording and insert it for the board members' review prior to finalization and submission.
Yeah, that makes, that makes some sense. Because again, the HOA isn't in existence until after it's been developed. So the condition of approval can't really make the HOA really do anything because the condition of approval, once you meet it and you sell the lots, that's done.
Right. And we will, or the board will see, it is our custom to bring to you the draft HOA documents for review before, you know, and a formal vote of approval, if you will, of the form of them. So we will have another place to ensure and another way to ensure that that provision is actually inserted in the docs. So I will add that as a condition, work on the wording, finalize it, and share it with you tomorrow.
Tina, that would just be the two abutters on, on the roadway, right?
That's correct. And have frontage on Sherman on the north side.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that would be my recommendation.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Kevin. Through the chair to Tina again on, one of the, the abutters also mentioned street lighting. And I see your condition is, you know, if illumination is found to be inadequate, then we're going to add it. Is there any way to, I mean, I know if it's needed, it's needed. I guess maybe we should, could we modify that to include that if illumination is found to be inadequate, to incorporate street light in a location approved by the Department of Public Works? I don't know how to, to kind of make sure that they don't get the lighting in their windows. That's basically what they're, what they're asking at. Is there modified lighting that they could use to, such that it's not obtrusive?
Well, I suppose we could certainly add a provision in that suggested condition number three that says something that like, if a street light is required, that best efforts shall be taken to use a street, a light fixture that, you know, prevents, it's a little hard to do because those lights tend to be a little bit high and shine down. But maybe there's some wording I could add there about using, you know, a lighting.
And I, the, the wording escapes me. I know we've done it in the past.
I could certainly try to work on something that the board is amenable. I can certainly add that would not hurt. One would, in fact, the DPW director who raised the issue, and rightly so, because we usually do require a street light at the end. But even in his comment letter, if I'm recalling it, it was just generally kind of, he wasn't really not advocating for a light.
Okay.
Was not saying one was needed. But he was acknowledging that usually we require one. But I'm hopeful that the illumination study or review that they do will show that what exists is enough insufficient, and they won't have to add one. But I will work on some wording to add to three about employing the right type of fixture to minimize light intrusion into the nearby houses.
Thank you. And as far as the calculation, so I catch basin one. I don't know if Mark's leg is still available. Was there anything we needed in addition to with keeping the roadway 24 feet? Was Jay Durand still happy with the runoff calculations?
Yes.
Okay.
Engineering and DPW were both satisfied with the calculations. There was, the only question was whether or not to change the grate style to a cascade grate or to add a twin grate catch basin, which would be a slightly larger structure.
Should that be worded in the decision?
I, my opinion, I think it should be specified in the decision. And if I had to make a decision, I would go with a twin grate catch basin rather than a cascade grate style because the cascade grates were more susceptible to clogging.
At least.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I will add that as a condition, I presume.
Did you catch that, Tina, the, the catch basin?
I'll get the wording on that tomorrow and I will add that as a condition.
Any other questions from the board? See, and then, Director, have any comments?
No, that would be my recommendation would be to adopt the revised decision or the decision as amended, revised in our discussion this evening.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Claudia, seconded by Bob. Roll call, please.
Claudia Bulken.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventreska.
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan.
Aye, seven in favor, not opposed. Next up.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, I'm looking at our hearing's request to modify 225 Wildwood Avenue special permit decision to eliminate condition one, Janus Research.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Attorney Tarby is here this evening to represent this petition. I will summarize it for you at the beginning and then turn it over to him for any further remarks. As the notice stated, there is an existing special permit that was granted in 2013 for Janus Research at 225 Wildwood. And the condition number one said that this special permit shall be exclusive to Janus Research Company LLC and shall not be transferable. Attorney Tarby can share some of the history of research and use of what seems to be a fairly common condition at around the time that it was imposed. And I will allow him, I guess, at this point, to take the proposed, explain the proposal to you and why they would like to have that either stricken or modified.
Thank you. For the, for the record, Joseph Tarby representing Janus Research, I don't know, is Janus Research ULT and then Lake Shore Cryotronics of Ohio. I had received a call a couple of weeks ago from my client indicating that they were in the process of selling 60% of their business at Wildwood Avenue and had called the building department on a simple request for a building permit. And, and Mr. Quinn suggested that they review the outstanding special permit. And in the special permit, there was, you know, condition one that indicated that the special permit was exclusive to Janus Research. So we filed a request on July 30th because it was holding up the closing, requesting that condition one of the special permit that was dated February 14th, 2013, and then amended on April 20th, 23rd, 2014, which stated that the special permit. which stated that the special permit shall be exclusive to Janus Research and shall not be transferable. And we had requested that one is either be deleted or in the alternative, be replaced with the following. Within three months of the change in the business operator of the underlying property, which is subject to the special permit, the new operator shall appear before the planning board to review the conditions of the special permit. Reason for the request is Janus is selling 60% of its business to Lake Shore. Lake Shore will assume 60% of the employees and the related work that's currently being performed with no changes in the type of work being performed or the hours of operation. So, as a result of the transaction, 60% of Janus's rights under the decision of being transferred to Lake Shore. And Janus will continue to operate on the property and operate 40% of the business as usual. If you were to walk into the premises, you'd have no idea that the ownership is broken down 60%, 40%. So, you know, in terms of these conditions, at some point, from time to time, these conditions are imposed and they do cause issues for petitioners. The language that I proposed is language that the city council used this year on a warehousing operation that was down on Holton Street. They, there was a user in there that owned the building. They supplied auto parts, they had an agreement to sell the property and the business. And the proposed new owner indicated that they weren't going to buy the business without the condition being changed. They went before the city council and city council adopted this condition. They had long discussion on this issue, on this petition and a couple others, where they recognized the impact of these type of conditions on certain conditions. We had one a couple of years ago down on Olympia Avenue, where there was a self-storage facility approved, company was in California. The lender had all kinds of issues with the language, being concerned that if it was a foreclosure or in which case they would step in, they wouldn't be able to operate the facility, you know, given that condition. The council went ahead and they modified the language so that it allowed the transfer of the permit to a use that was similar. The council also did that recently on Montville Avenue with the Dunkin' Donuts, where there was a non-transferability condition, which they added language that it would be allowed to be transferred to a similar use as Dunkin' Donuts. So, we're requesting that the condition either be deleted or the alternative language be adopted.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Claudia?
I am unable to remember what the point of that condition was. I'm guessing that there was something about this use. I don't know, is this like, Joe, is this a biotech type of company? I mean, you know, what actually goes on in that facility is that, and I'm, and that's just for me to understand why we would put the condition on in the first place.
Yeah, they design and sell and fabricate cryogenic laboratory equipment. So, the process involves the cutting of sheet metal, grinding and polishing of metals into the finished product. So, there's no biotech use that takes place on that site. When you look at the decision, you know, the findings were pretty detailed that, you know, the petition met all the requirements under the zoning ordinance, had no impact on the area, the planning board determined that adequate parking and loading and public infrastructure and satisfied with the relationship with the building as well as the decision protects adjoining premises by providing all the usual appropriate drainage, offers, et cetera. I went through my file that I took out of storage and I couldn't find any discussion at all about why that condition was imposed.
And then, I'm sorry, I was just going to jump in and add to that, that I looked at the minutes of the February 13th and then the 2014 amendment to see if there was anything in the minutes of the board meeting that would enlighten as to why that condition was imposed. And there was nothing in the minutes at all. It was, you know, just a recitation of the conditions with no explanation as to why that one or any of the others frankly were added, so.
Tina, was that meeting recorded?
I don't know, Dave. I know we have the minutes that are approved. It may be that we have a recording. I can't speak for 13, I wasn't here, and we might have it for the one in 14. I was here for the amendment in 2014. Yeah, I suppose it's possible that there's something that wasn't captured in the minutes, but that's on tape. I guess the question is, it would seem that there's a, and maybe there are more than two rational or two possibilities. One that I thought of was that the condition may have been imposed to make sure that if a new owner came in, the board had an opportunity to meet with them, explain the conditions, the seriousness and, you know, the intent. I suppose that was a possible reason. But the other one I was thinking was likely was that maybe the board was thinking, look, I don't have a problem with this particular manufacturer, with this particular business that he's represented to us with this application. But I don't know who the next owner operator is. And they could have 24/7 on operation and a very different type of manufacturing. There may be changes that come with a new owner or operator that would cause you to either perhaps amend one of the existing conditions or perhaps want to impose a new condition to address something that's emerging with the new ownership or management. And that's why there are, those are at least two reasons, trying to figure out why the board did it. It could also frankly have been, it seemed to be a pretty common use. And Attorney Tarby and I spoke earlier, certainly I'm in probably the worst position to make a comment on this, but I've seen it a lot, I've seen that condition, it's pretty common. So, I'm not sure if there was something very specific about this particular property or this entity that worried or concerned the board enough to put that in. It may just have been a fairly common thing to do.
If I may, to the chair. I believe that was a general statement I think we made on all special permits. And I think it was because of, we wanted to make sure if the property was sold or transferred over, that the new people coming in were aware of the situation. Not so much to, obviously, you know, that they, the new owners would need to know that they need to abide by these special permits. And I believe that was a general condition on pretty much, I'd say 80 to 90% of our special permits at that time.
And that was the reason, Mr. Ventresca, was so that you could?
I believe so, from my recollection, I believe so that new ownership are, they, the people were looking to transfer ownership that whoever was coming in was aware of these conditions. I could be wrong, but I think that's what I have.
And I think, you know, the language, the alternate language that we proposed that would require a new operator to have to come before the planning board so the planning board could review the conditions so that they understood what their obligations were. And clearly, any violation of those conditions would be something that Tom Quinn could have forced, because if you, if you look at the big picture, you know, you have a situation, you know, especially, you know, now with scheduling, where you have a business transaction, you have a condition like this, and it could, you know, could potentially take, you know, two months to go through the process. And then in the meantime, that, you know, the proposed buyer is off to another city or town looking to bring its business. So, you know, the language that we proposed, you know, still gives the plan, you have to come before the planning board, for the planning board to go over the conditions and make sure, you know, you can require anything, you could require the new operator to sign an acknowledgement that review the conditions and understand what they are. So, that's why we proposed that language.
Any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Director, see anyone out there wish to speak?
There's anybody who would like to speak? Please hover your cursor over the participants button and hit the raise hand feature. And I will scan the audience, and Mr. Chairman, I see no one.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Does the director have a recommendation?
Going to close the public hearing?
The public hearing, please.
Second.
Motion made by, by Bob, second by Mike, roll call please.
Alia Bolton?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds? David?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Carolyn, Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan?
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed, a close of public hearing. Now, does the director have a recommendation?
I do, I would recommend that the board should be modifying condition number one of the February 14th, 2013, and I believe it was April, perhaps, of 2014 amendment to revise condition one as follows, to read as follows. Within three months of any change in the business operator of the underlying property, which is subject to the special permit, the new operator shall appear before the planning board to review the conditions of the special permit to ensure continued conformance therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, second by Claudia, roll call please.
Alia Bolton?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan?
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes, July 15th, 2020, and July 21st, 2020.
If everyone has seen them, I would make a motion, starting with July 15th, 2020, to approve those minutes as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Claudia, second by Michael to approve the July 15th minutes. Roll call please.
Alia Bolton?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
Yeah, Kevin Donovan?
Aye, six in favor, one abstained to approve the minutes.
So, then the second minutes are July 21st, 2020. Tina, was this the special meeting, right? Karen, was this a special meeting?
No, the 15th was a special meeting. And I'm questioning now, were some of the, some members absent that maybe had just voted?
Was I absent for that one?
Yeah.
Well, I abstain, so it's five in favor to abstain.
Thank you.
All right, Karen, do you think that works now? That's why I was, I was wondering which one it was, because if it was the second one, then, you know. But the second one is the, is the regular meeting, correct?
Right, the 21st is the regular meeting.
Okay, great. All right, so then, as to the July 21st, 2020 minutes, I would make a motion to approve those as submitted.
I will second that.
Motion made by Claudia, second by Bob to approve the July 21st minutes. Roll call please.
Cladie Bolton?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan?
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed. Next up, planning board director update.
Yes, so just a couple of things to let you know that so initially, before COVID, we had at the beginning of the year expected to hold two meetings in September on the 8th and the 22nd. I would recommend to you that we cancel the planned meeting on the 8th and stick with a monthly meeting to be held on September 22nd. On that agenda would be a couple of things. Certainly, the two public hearings that we continue this evening relative to the two New Boston Street filings. And the only other thing at this point that's lined up for that agenda would be the discussion of Burillo Drive and Strawberry Lane, the conversation that we had relative to a potential groundwater breakout and elevation in the subdivision and whether there is compliance with the approved plan. That will be on the September 22nd agenda as well. The one thing I wanted to ask the board quickly to get a sense of the board without any commitment is that there is a five-week window between now and September 22nd. And there is a chance that we would have, in fact, I know of one developer who may want to have us or would love to have post a bond to be able to have a lot released for building and sale, or at least building purposes. And so, I wanted to ask the board, if you would be willing, if the need arose and was appropriate, would members be willing to potentially attend a special meeting for one or two very quick items that may pop up between now and the September 22nd meeting as opposed to having them wait for that period of time? I'd love to just get a sense of your willingness or unwillingness to do that. That'll help us with the planning and responding to any inquiries.
I have no problem with that, Tina.
Thank you.
I do, neither.
Yeah, me neither. I'm here.
I do. I just, I won't, I'm going to be out of town next week and the following week, that's all.
Excellent. Well, thank you, we'll include you depending on when it happens, but I appreciate everyone's willingness. That's very helpful. And then the only other thing I just wanted to mention to you tonight is that as two of our members know, the Commerce Way Corridor Overlay District Concept Plan Review Committee, say that on the ones passed, did have a meeting, did meet with the prospective multifamily developers of both properties as part of that committee. They issued a report, which is required by Section 23 of the zoning ordinance. And we provided you with copies of what were their applications for each project. And I believe we got at least one of the reports, it's a one-page letter to Attorney Tarby, who represents both applicants, from Gordon Vincent. And there are two, one for 316 New Boston Street and one for 0 off New Boston Street. I'll double check in the morning to make sure that you received both of those reports. But I know at least one of them went to you today in the supplemental packet. They are identical but for the address that cited in them. But that work has been done, I don't know if any members want to say anything about that process or what they heard. But I wanted the members to know that the section 23 requires that report to be submitted to the city council and to the planning board, and so you have now officially received it.
I'll just make a quick comment on that. It's a pretty simple process in that when we set up the CWOD, we put it in there that
that if anybody presents a plan, it has to fit certain criterias. So you don't get really deep into it, you just make sure that the proposal fits those criteria. And if it does, it's an approval on that side of it. And it's pretty specific as to what criterias have to be met. And as a group, we felt that these two proposals, because we got to see what they really are going to build there as compared to what we're looking at now, both of those proposals definitely met the criteria set up. And I don't know if Jimmy wants to add anything into that.
You get it all, Bob.
Thanks, Jim.
That's all I had for this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, if there is no other business and hearing none, I would make a motion to adjourn at 8:48.
I will second that.
Motion made by Claudia to adjourn, second by Bob. Roll call, please.
Audrey Bulgen?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Bob Dougherty?
Aye.
Dave Edmonds?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Mike Ventresca?
Aye.
Chair Kevin Donovan?
Aye, seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you all. All right. Thank you. And thank you to Tina and Karen and Dan for running yet another very well-run virtual planning board meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We made it over to City Hall again.